Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, six P. M., regular school board meeting. We'd like to call forward the Matanzas students presenting their colors. We have Cadet Second Lieutenant Arabella Allen, Cadet Sergeant Mason Seperseda, Cassette Corporal Manuel Coleman-Neris, and Cadet Private First Class Jacob Mulnary. I want to have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Right, arms. Right, face forward, march.
Okay, please be seated. Okay, roll call will start at the end.
Stanley Gatzig here.
Brendan Wong, present.
Colin Conklin, present.
Cheryl Muschero.
Sally Hunt.
Kristy Chong.
Wolf Furry, present.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay, we're going to move on to special announcements. Two oh one, proclamations, resolutions, and legislative updates. Anything for two oh one? We will move on to two point zero two. We have a proclamation for National Human Traffic Awareness Month. We're going to read this out together. And so this resolution is of the Flagler County School Board recognizing January twenty twenty-four as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. We'll start, read this one paragraph at a time, starting at the end.
Whereas human trafficking is a recruitment harboring transportation provision or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of forced labor or sexual servitude, and?
Whereas human trafficking is a thirty-two billion dollar a year global crime enterprise and is a crime as well as a civil and human rights violation, and an estimated twenty-five million people are currently victims of human trafficking for both sex and labor, and?
Whereas human traffickers prey on their victims by promising a life of hope and greater opportunity while delivering only enslavement. Instead of delivering people to better lives, traffickers unjustifiably profit from the labor and toil of their victims, and?
Whereas human trafficking is a modern form of the oldest and most barbaric type of exploitation, and we proclaim it has no place in our nation or our community, and?
Whereas more awareness and education are crucial to eradicating human trafficking in our communities, state, and nation, and?
Whereas Flagler County Advocates Alliance, comprised of Flagler County Sheriff's Office Victims Advocates, Flagler Beach Police Department Victim Advocate, State Attorneys Victim Advocate, Seventh Judicial Circuit Flagler, and Family Life Center, are working together to increase public understanding of this problem and mobilize community efforts to end human trafficking, and?
Now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that we hereby proclaim the month of January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month and urge all citizens of Flagler County to become a part of the community response to end human trafficking and to send the message that this crime will not be tolerated in our community. Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof held on this day, the nineteenth day of December twenty twenty-three, William Furry Chair, Flagler County School Board, and LaShaka Moore Superintendent, Flagler Schools. We have another proclamation that we're going to read together again tonight, which is National Stalking Awareness Month. This resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognize, recognizing January twenty twenty-four as National Stalking Awareness Month.
Whereas, under the laws of all fifty states, the United States Territories, the District of Columbia, and the federal government, stalking is a crime, and?
Whereas up to seven point five million people are stalked in a one-year period in the United States, and the majority of victims are stalked by someone they know, and?
Whereas many stalking victims lose time from work and experience serious psychological distress and loss productivity at a much higher rate than the general population, and?
Whereas many stalking victims are forced to protect themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs, and obtaining protection orders, and?
Whereas many stalkers use technology such as cell phones, global positioning systems, or GPS, cameras, and spyware to monitor and track their victims, and?
Whereas there is a need for great public awareness about the nature, criminality, and potential lethality of stalking, and?
Whereas criminal justice systems can enhance their response to stalking by regular training and assertive investigation and prosecution of the crime, and laws and public policies must be continually adopted to keep pace with new tactics used by stalkers. And whereas communities can better combat stalking by adopting multidisciplinary responses by teams of local agencies and organizations and by providing more and better victim services. And whereas Flagler County Advocates Alliance comprise of Flagler County Sheriff's Office Victims Advocates, Flagler Beach Police Department Victim Advocates, State Attorneys Victim Advocates, Seventh Judicial Circuit Flagler, and Family Life Center are working together to increase public understanding of the problem and mobilizing, mobilize community efforts to end stalking. And now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that we hereby declare the month of January as National Stalking Awareness Month in Flagler County and applaud the efforts of the many, of the many victim service providers, police officers, prosecutors, national and community organizers, and private sector supporters for their efforts in promoting awareness about stalking. Adopted by members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof held on the nineteenth day of December twenty twenty-three, William Furry Chair, School Board of Flagler County, LaShaka Moore Superintendent, Flagler Schools. And we have one more here, National Mentoring Month. A resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing January twenty twenty-four as National Mentoring Month.
Whereas January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to recruit quality mentors to provide additional networks of support for young people, and?
Whereas Flagler Schools recognizes the contributions of volunteer mentors who guide young people to succeed in their education, career, and well-being, and?
Whereas mentoring programs like the African-American Mentoring Program, Take Stock in Children, and Reading Pals make our state and community stronger by enabling impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks.
And whereas mentors can help young people explore careers and build skills to achieve higher lifetime economic outcomes through activities like helping them set career goals, write a resume, practice for an interview, connect them to opportunities, and more, and?
Whereas research has demonstrated that mentoring programs have a significant positive impact on a variety of academic achievement measures, including truancy and absenteeism, scholastic efficacy and engagement, school-related misconduct, and peer support, and?
Whereas quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and relationship growth for young people, and?
Whereas with a mentor, youth-facing risks are more likely to enroll in college, less likely to start using drugs, and more likely to volunteer regularly in their communities. And whereas, while one is, one in three young people still grow up without a mentor, demonstrating the need for additional awareness and resources for mentoring programs. And whereas National Mentoring Month is the time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across our state and recruit caring adult mentors in Flagler County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that January is recognized as National Mentoring Month by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting therefore held on the nineteenth day of December twenty twenty-three, William Furry Chair, School Board of Flagler County, and LaShaka Moore Superintendent of Flagler Schools. And that concludes our proclamations for this evening. So we are going to move on now to number three, spotlights, and we'll start with Superintendent Strategic Plan Spotlight.
Good evening. I'm super excited to see a full house of individuals here, and I'm sure you want to stay for the entire board meeting today. But just in case you're not, I'm going to go right into the Strategic Plan Spotlight. I want to spotlight two goals. One, starting off with Goal One, which is around our academic achievement, and highlight the fact that on last week, the state of Florida released school district grades. and our school district of Flagler County did score at a Level B, which we are proud of the hard work and dedication of all of our faculty and staff. We know that with some strategic planning, we are on our way to be an A school district and a very high-performing district. So I want to just highlight that. I also want to take a moment to highlight Goal Four. And Board, I think this is something important that we began to do as we hire key leadership roles within our organization, that we bring those individuals before you so that you have an opportunity to see who they are. So we have been in the process of hiring a principal for Bonnell Elementary School. We had a team of individuals that did a series of rounds of interviews. So we started off with a team that was led by our HR department that included district staff, it included community members, it included parents, and it included various members of the staff of Bonnell Elementary School. Those individuals met and they interviewed all of our candidates and brought forward to me a recommendation from that committee. They brought for, forward to me their top two recommendations. And that being said, then senior leadership, we interviewed those individuals and we have made a decision and it, I am very proud to recognize and recommend to this board that we hire for the role of Principal of Bonnell Elementary School, Ms. Carrie McGee. And I do ask Ms. McGee to just come up, you can come up and we'll get a nice picture of you. On next month, we will bring forward our communications coordinator of communications before you, but on the agenda tonight, we are recommending hiring for our communications coordinator, which is Mr. Don Foley. He was not able to be here with us today, but we will be sure that he is here with us on next month so he can be recognized. And before going on to that, I want to just take another opportunity to thank Mr. Jason Wheeler for all that he has done for Flagler Schools. You know, when we interviewed for this position, Mr. Foley said, "I can't replace Mr. Wheeler." And I said, "Good, because we're not looking for a replacement for Mr. Wheeler." But we do appreciate you, Mr. Wheeler, and all that you have done for Flagler Schools. And we, we just wish you the very best as you move on to your next adventure. So we are recommending Ms. Carrie, Ms. Carrie McGee for the role of Bonnell Elementary School Principal, and I wanted an opportunity for her to stand before you today.
Wonderful, welcome, congratulations.
I did just want to take a brief moment to thank the superintendent and her cabinet, the board, and the interviewing committee for providing me with the opportunity to be the 40th Principal of Bonnell Elementary School. I do not take this charge lightly and will serve the school and community with great care and respect. We will continue to move Flagler forward through being Bull Pup Strong. We will prioritize quality Tier One Standards-Aligned Instruction for our students as well as creating a culture and climate where all voices are heard and all stakeholders feel welcome. While I have this floor, which I don't know if I'm supposed to, but I'm going to go ahead and share, I want you to know that we have a slam dunk faculty and staff, a group of 150 folks that I have come to know and love over the last four and a half years. They make magic every day and are counting on the continued support of the district and board. I also want to mention my partner and my children who have been my one true north in every storm and are the blessing in my life that allows me to work to be a blessing to others. Thank you and go Bull Pups.
Congratulations.
All right, congratulations. And we're going to move on to three point zero two, Flagler County Education Foundation Spotlight.
Yes, and Ms. Selena Hernandez will be giving the update for the Education Foundation.
Welcome.
Hello, hello, thank you Superintendent, Chair, and Board members for allowing us to give this spotlight of this month. It's awesome because it aligns with how we just did a proclamation for National Mentoring Month. We are spotlighting our Take Stock in Children senior student at FPC as she was a finalist this last month in our Leaders for Life Fellowship. She was top 12 out of about 90 students becoming a finalist. The Leaders for Life Fellowship benefits include a new laptop computer, leadership training, and professional development. The fellow that wins this award will also receive funding of up to $10,000 per year, so it is a great opportunity. She will be now put into a pool with the 12 students and it will be narrowed down to six students that will win the fellowship. And we will find that out on January 18th. So we wish Chloe the best of luck. Her brother was a 2022 Fellow winner, so we're hoping that we can have some siblings that win that. Next up on our spotlight is, we just want to spotlight our new literacy events that we have been doing, the Well Read Wanders. We had our second event this last Saturday and we had about 54 people attend this event. So our next one is going to be on January 20th at the, at a church on Beltar Parkway. I can't remember the name off the top of my head, but we will be posting it on our social media page so we can get families signed up. And we are looking forward to help these students and these parents get educated on literacy and reading skills. That's all I have for you today, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move on to three point zero three, Employee Teacher and Rookie of the Year, presented by Jason Wheeler.
Mr. Chair, Superintendent, Board, it is my extinguished pleasure to introduce you to this year's spectacular class of teachers, employees, and rookie teachers of the year. We have 37 of them tonight. On the 24th of January, we will gather at the Fitzgerald Performing Arts Center at Flagler Auditorium for a Night of Legends. And we have legends among us tonight. We have some legends in the making and they will all be legendary when this is all, all said and done. So with that in mind, I'm going to have all the principals come up. We're going to do the elementaries, and the middles, and then the highs, and then the directors. I've told them, no speechifying. They're just going to introduce their folks because we have, like I said, 37 folks and we got to get them through. So with no further ado, Ms. McGee, you're up.
I do have speeches for all of them, but I'll spare you from that. Our Rookie Teacher of the Year is Ms. Haley Eubanks. Our Employee of the Year is Ms. Madeline Martinez Ortega. And our Teacher of the Year is Melissa Atkinson Brock.
Come on up, come on up. As she calls your name, please come up.
When your name is called, please come up.
Want them in the front there? Yeah, just line up in the front.
Good evening, I'm Jessica D. Ford, the proud principal of Beltar Elementary, and I would love to present to you Ms. Vanessa Ajayi, our Teacher of the Year. She is our Title One Interventionist. She opened Beltar and has an everlasting impact on so many Flagler families. Come on up, Ms. Ajayi. And then, next I would like to introduce Ms. Sala Gargan, our Rookie Teacher of the Year. She teaches second grade and does a phenomenal job of individualizing instruction and making sure each kid gets exactly what they need to grow. And then our Employee of the Year is Ms. Lisa Mead. And she became unwell at the end of the day, so she is not available to join us. But she does a great job of welcoming all of our Flagler families and making sure that they feel safe, secure, and welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Board, I'm Nicole Critcher, the principal at Old Kings, and I am very proud to present Christopher Knox. He is our Teacher of the Year. He is currently a fourth-grade teacher and Chris has been with Flagler Schools for 20 years. Our Rookie Teacher of the Year is Brian Seho. Brian is second year with us and he was hired from his senior internship with Mr. Knox. And our Employee of the Year is Alicia Willis. She is our nurse aide and the nurse and she always has a smile on her face for our sick babies. So thank you, Alicia.
Good evening, I'm Travis, the proud principal of Rimfire. And I have with me tonight our Teacher of the Year, second grade, Ms. Allison Kacharsky. Allison opened Rimfire in 2006. Allison opened Rimfire in 2006. She does a great job of connecting with her students and getting a great deal of growth. I also have our Rookie Teacher of the Year, Megan Maisy. Megan also interned with us and she joined us two years ago and has done a fabulous job, again, connecting with her team and growing her students. And finally, I have our Employee of the Year. I have our, sorry, I have our Employee of the Year, Mrs. Delgado, Lillian Delgado. And she started as our receptionist and she's now serving as our school secretary and does a great job connecting with all our students, staff, and families.
Wadsworth Elementary School.
I also wrote speeches, but we'll keep them short. So good evening, Board, I am the proud principal, Amy Newenfeld, of Wadsworth Elementary School. And tonight I have the honor of introducing Cassie Bennett. She is our Employee of the Year and she actually started out in our ISS room and is now our registrar. And she definitely has a heart for all of our children and has brought back her bookstore. And we have a saying, if you don't have the answer, just call Cassie. Andrea Puckering cannot be here tonight and she's our rookie teacher. And when I first started at Wadsworth, I thought she had been teaching for years and come to find out, it was only her second year. She is, if you need a smile and you need a good day, just stop by her room. And then our Teacher of the Year is Ms. Annette Clemens. And she has gone from para to rock star teacher. And if you ever want to just feel like you're a success, walk in her room because she meets students where they are and ensures that they grow from there. So I am very proud of these ladies.
And I Flagler.
Good evening, Superintendent and School Board members. I am the proud principal of I Flagler Virtual Programs and I am going to present tonight our Teacher of the Year, Mr. James Thrall. He teaches a plethora of subjects, but ranging in English and social studies. I'm also blessed to not have a Rookie of the Year because I have a team of veteran teachers, so we are excited for that. And our Employee of the Year is Ms. Beatty Barnes. She is our information specialist. So not only is she in charge of all scheduling for the full-time virtual program, but also the part-time program. We service thousands of students at the high schools and secondary as, and enters all of those grades as well as all of the Florida Virtual School grades that come into the districts. She has a very big job and works with all the schools, thank you.
Buddy Taylor Middle School.
Good evening, Board, I'm Kara Kronk, the proud principal of Buddy Taylor Middle School. And I am so excited to introduce you tonight to our Rookie of the Year, Ms. Megan Kizner, who is a seventh and eighth grade art teacher. And our Employee of the Year, Mr. Jimmy Sorrentino, who is our campus advisor and many of you see him out at Car Riders every morning or dressed up for all of our dress-up days. And our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Catherine Gerald, who is our culinary teacher.
Indian Trails Middle School.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Ryan Andrews, principal of Indian Trails Middle School. And with us tonight, we have our Rookie Teacher of the Year, Ms. Hannah Anderson. Hannah is a second-year teacher and actually a alumni of Indian Trails as well. Our Employee of the Year, Ms. Mackenzie Carter Spack. She is our nurse and you would think she's been there for 30 years and ran a hospital as well, but we couldn't do it without her. And then with us, our employee, excuse me, our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Erica Babcock. She is currently our Behavior Interventionist and has done many roles at Indian Trails, but she is our literal Swiss Army knife and willing to jump in wherever necessary.
Flagler Palm Coast High School.
Good evening, Board, I am the proud principal of Flagler Palm Coast High School. My name is Bobby Bossardet and I have the honor of recognizing some phenomenal women who are setting the standard in public education over at FPC. I'm going to start with our Rookie Teacher of the Year. This is Bulldog grad, FPC alumni, Ms. Ashlyn Wilkerson. Our Employee of the Year and also an FPC grad and the voice of the Bulldogs, Ms. Ginger Smith. And an absolute game changer in our math department, Ms. Maria Faircloth.
Matanzas High School.
Good evening, Board, I'm proud to present our Rookie Teacher of the Year, Ms. Janelle Walker. Ms. Janelle Walker is in her second year of teaching, but she's been a pirate a long time. She was a parent of a Matanzas student, has been a paraprofessional campus advisor, and is now an ESE Life Skills teacher and she's absolutely fabulous. I'd also love to introduce Ms. Mary Ann Millenac. She's our Dean's Secretary. And while going to the dean's office may not be the best part of a student's day, I guarantee you their interaction with Ms. Mary Ann will be because she's an absolute ray of sunshine and we just appreciate everything she does for us. And finally, our Teacher of the Year is our Lead School Counselor, Ms. Karen Feist. Ms. Feist is a leader, she's a mentor, she's an advocate for our students, and she is absolutely the most reliable professional and advocate for students that you will find in our school counseling department. So thank you.
Custodial Services.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Nancy Anderson, Custodial Director, and I'm introducing Ms. Natalie Pahidra, our Employee of the Year.
Food Nutrition Services.
Good evening, everyone, I am absolutely honored to introduce our Food Nutrition Services, Cafe E D U Employee of the Year. She is someone who believes that, and these are her words, giving students great food is important, but it's also important to give them a great taste of life that can be consumed without eating. So it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Lena Che.
Government Services Building.
Board, I have the distinct honor in recognizing one of HR's very own. He's a personnel specialist too. And you know, he's very well-respected when everybody goes, "I don't know, let's ask Tony." Tony Coats!
Plant Services.
Good evening, my name is Cory Bush, Director of Plant Services, and I have the distinct pleasure of Ron Kachafi, FS3 for Plant Services.
Technology and I S.
Good evening, my name is-
My name is Mark Saltmash, director of Information Systems, and I'd like to introduce our employee of the year for Technology and Information Systems, Dawn Gilpin.
And Transportation Services.
Good evening, board. I'm Dave Freeman, chief of operations, stand-in for OJ Walker, who is still handling our transportation. And I am proud to announce that our Transportation Employee of the Year is Graza De Oliveira. She is our trainer, and I can tell you firsthand what an asset she is to the Transportation Department. So, thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is Renee Kirkland. I'm the proud director of Flagler Technical College, and I'd like to introduce to you tonight our employee of the year, Allison Castorino, who is our marketing and recruitment specialist. Our teacher of the year could not be with us tonight. He finished class last week, and so he's on vacation, and that's Bruce Winters. He is our commercial vehicle driving teacher, and so he does our truck driving program.
Congratulations. We appreciate all of you. Okay, so we're going to move on to 3.04, Middle School Athlete Spotlight, presented by Thomas Ullahan.
Good afternoon, Chair Furry, school board member Superintendent Moore. I have the distinct honor to present our two middle school athletes and one of our coaches, Mike Payne, who also works in our IT department. When I did present in information meeting, we did have an emphasis on middle school sports and how we can strengthen our middle school sports. There are many organizations that are ran through AAU that help Indian Trails, Buddy Taylor Middle School, and Imagine Charter opportunities to excel in athletics. So, tonight, just as we do with our high school athletes, we have the opportunity to present two middle school students that excelled in a cross-country event this fall. So, without further ado, Mr. Mike Payne.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Moore. I'm here tonight to talk about two local middle school athletes who achieved a significant milestone. One of them I coach, and the other is on another team, but I've gotten to know her over the past year. Let me first start off by talking about Peyton Sarassi. Peyton is an eighth grader at Indian Trails Middle School and runs for their team. Over the past several months, Peyton competed at seven cross-country meets. At every meet, she placed in the top four. She finished fourth once, third once, second place twice, and first, sorry, first place three times. She achieved a personal record of 11 minutes and eight seconds, I'm sorry, 11 minutes and three seconds in the three-kilometer cross-country distance. On October 11th, Peyton won the Flagler County Middle School Cross Country Championship, ranking her the number-one girl in the county for middle school. Moving on to the state meet that was contested on October 28th in Lakeland, she finished in second place. That is, second place in the state for all girls in grades six to eight. Peyton is currently ranked 27th out of all eighth graders in the nation. While I'm not her coach, I have enjoyed watching her run and seeing her accomplishments, and I look forward to continuing to watch her in her high school career. Congratulations, Peyton. The next athlete that I would like to talk about is Douglas Seth. While Douglas is in the seventh grade and attends Buddy Taylor Middle School, he runs on the club team I coach that is based at Imagine School in Town Center. This past summer, while we were away at our team's summer camp in North Carolina, I asked each team member to set goals for themselves for the cross-country season. Douglas set some big goals. One was to break 10 minutes in the 3K distance, and the other was to be the boys' middle school state champion. He ran in nine separate meets, finishing within the top seven at all the meets, the top five seven times, the top two four times, and winning two meets. At the Flagler County Championship, he won, ranking him the number-one boy in the county for middle school. On October 28th, he also attended the state middle school championship in Lakeland. In the boys' race, Douglas finished second in a time of nine minutes and 58 seconds, a personal record. Douglas is currently ranked number five in the nation for seventh-grade boys. He did complete his goal of breaking 10 minutes in the 3K. While he didn't achieve his other goal of being the state champion this year, coming in runner-up was a pretty great way to end the season. There is no doubt in my mind that he will achieve that goal next year in eighth grade. Douglas has a great work ethic, is musically inclined, gets good grades, and is firmly grounded in his faith. I would like to publicly congratulate both Peyton and Douglas on their accomplishments. Thank you.
Chair Furry, if I may, I will say that I am so proud of those two. I did have the privilege of being their proud principal, but I want to take a moment to acknowledge Coach Sarassi, who's here in the room. Coach Sarassi has been doing the running club at Remfire Elementary School for now 18, 18 years, and those students started off running right there at Remfire Elementary School with Coach Sarassi. So, thank you so much. I am so proud of our students. Yes, thank you, Coach Sarassi. And so proud of our students, to see them just accomplish so much. And this is what I will say, they are great representation of Flagler Schools. They are not just great athletes, they are great people. And so, thank you, guys, for being such great representatives of Flagler Schools. I'm so proud of you, guys, and one of these days, I'm going to take you down when I can finally run fast enough to keep up with you, but, you know, we're going to work on it. So, congratulations.
Well said, Superintendent Moore. Okay, now, we're going to move on to 3.05, Matanzas High School Visual Arts Awards, presented by Principal Kristen Bozeman.
Good evening, school board and Superintendent Moore. I'd like to invite two art educators from Matanzas High School to join me. Ms. Katrina Vitkus is our art department chair, as well as our sculpture and 3D art teacher, and Ms. Amy Taylor is our drawing and painting teacher. Ladies, if you would please join me. I'm here tonight, and I thank you for recognizing Matanzas High School Visual Arts students who won the top awards at the Daytona State College Sixth Annual Art Show Competition. Students in Flagler, Volusia, and surrounding counties entered the competition, and 45 student pieces were chosen out of 175 entries. They were selected by Daytona State College faculty members to be displayed as part of the art show. Top awards for the art show participants were determined by the Daytona State College Art Club students, with Matanzas High School 11th grade student Devon Hoffman being awarded first place in the 2D category. Come on up here, Devon. 10th grade student Olivia Rabat won first place in the 3D category. Olivia? And 12th grade student May Butler was recognized as best in show. All three students were awarded a prize package containing professional art supplies. May was awarded a scholarship for a visual art or art history course at Daytona State College, and we also have a display to show you their winning artwork. And thank you so much, board, for taking this time to recognize our talented art students at Matanzas High School.
All right, so that ends our spotlight. So, we're moving on here to approval of minutes. Any, do you have anything to say about the minutes? Okay, seeing none. I just need a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second? Can I get a second? Okay. I have a motion to approve by Ms. Chong, and a second by Dr. Conklin. Is there any discussion? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unopposed? Motion passes. Okay, so the adoption of the agenda, changes agenda, any changes?
No changes.
Okay. So, then, we will move on to 6.01, Public Comment.
Chair Furry.
Yes?
I'm so sorry. I don't quite remember. Would it come under this section of changing the agenda to pull 11.02 out of consent, or would we talk about that at the next section?
11.02, General Counsel Job Description.
Ms. Hunt, if you are requesting that 11.02 be switched from consent to action, yes, now is the time to do that.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, there were some questions. I just wanted to make sure, not that we need to have discussion, but I just wanted to pull it, just in case there was discussion, if possible.
Okay, did you have, did you have discussion on it? Or I think that was Ms. Chong, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, did you, did you want that pulled also?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Cool. That's all I wanted to know.
Okay, so then, we're okay with leaving in consent?
I'm okay if everybody's okay, yes.
That is true. We did have a discussion about that at our earlier workshops. So, as long as everybody's fine with it staying in consent, then we'll leave it there. Ms. Chong? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to move on to 6.01, Public Comment. Do we have anybody signed up for Public Comment?
None at this time.
Okay, seeing no one approaching, we will move on to number seven. This is Resources and Support Consent Items, 7.01 through 7.09. These items, we do workshop at our workshop meetings and have discussed them thoroughly. So, but we will move for a approval of all the items at the same time. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent items 7.01 through 7.09?
Move approval.
Second.
You have a approval from Dr. Conklin and a second from Ms. Masaro. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we move on down to number nine, Overnight Travel Consent Field Trip, presented by Mr. Reeves.
Move approval.
Anything more to add to there? Okay, so move approval?
Second.
Okay. The, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, who made the?
Cheryl.
Cheryl, okay. We have a motion to approve by Ms. Masaro and a second by Dr. Conklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. Motion carries. Okay, we move on to Operational Services, 10.01, Department of Education Five-Year Work Plan, that was presented by Cory Bush. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Ms. Chong to approve. I need a second.
I'll second.
I have a second from Ms. Hunt. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Human Resources Services Consent, we have 11.01, Request Board Approval for Personal Items, and 11.02, General Counsel Job Description. I need a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
You have a motion from Dr. Conklin and a second from Ms. Masaro. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, we move down to Action Item, and this here is number 16, Academic Services Instructional Calendar, presented by Liz Bosserdet.
Move approval. Second.
I believe there were some changes that, on this, that Ms. Bosserdet wanted to share with us.
Okay. Have to get a motion first.
Yes, I just wanted to highlight to the board, we did put out a survey for our community parents and employees to respond to. We had over 265 responses in just the short week that it was up. 60% liked the calendar as is, and we did get a variety of responses. There are people who are double-counted, but 64% were parents and guardians, 46% were employees, and 4% were community members. Again, if they selected both categories, they are counted twice in those percentages. The only change that we did make was, based on the recommendation of both the committee and some of the suggestions that we had, was to move the teacher workday that was to occur on March 24th to March 14th. Part of the reason for that change was because it does align with our neighboring counties, and we have been, when we looked at Volusia again, it appears that the information we received may have been for this year's spring break, so it looks like their spring break actually does align with ours. So, we will have Volusia, Flagler, St. John's, and Daytona State all having the same spring break, and by moving that teacher workday, it would also align our teacher workday with St. John's and Volusia County. So, for those concerns about having surrounding counties in alignment there, that was done to rectify that. The teacher workday is used solely for teachers to input grades. Meetings do not occur on that day. It's for them to close out their grade books, and some of the sentiments shared by the calendar committee was that it also gave them a sense of relief that they had their grades finalized before they went on break. So, that was an easy change to move. I do want to share that there were a lot of comments that we received from the people who weren't pleased with some of the pieces on the calendar, surrounding things that were, things we can't change statutorily or due to polling. But we do have all of the comments collected, and our calendar committee is going to meet in the spring to see how we can address some of those comments when developing the 25-26 calendar. So, I just want to make sure it's very clear to the public, we are taking your feedback for future development, but this was the only actionable change we could make at this time. Are there any questions?
Great report.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I need a motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Ms. Chong, and I need a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Conklin. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay, so now we move down to 21, 21.01, old business. Does anybody have old business to bring up? Seeing none, we'll move forward to 21.02, which is update on interim school board attorney. As I mentioned at our last business meeting, that I would just go out and seek interest in, in firms that would be interested in filling in an interim role. And so just to date, just to give you an update, I do have one firm, Weiss and Sorota, they are, they are willing to work with us on an interim basis. They've quoted us right now at an hourly rate of 300 per hour and they would not bill for any travel involved appearing at meetings. So that is just a resource that we, we have, we have a response here saying that they're willing to engage in a short-term type of scenario if we need it, okay? And if there are another, any more, come, I will, I'll update you at our next meeting. Any other, any questions about this item?
Where are they located?
They are located in Gainesville.
Oh great, thank you Will for doing that.
Pardon me? They're located in Gainesville, Florida. And they do other, they work with other school boards as well, so they have experience in school board.
Mr. Furry, how many other people have you contacted?
I've tried to reach out to a few and not had success yet making connection. It's, you know, being that it's around the holiday season, this is a little bit more of a challenge. Again, this is not one that we, I have selected, it's just the one that I have found that has responded and willing to do it under the terms of an interim type of scenario. So this would still be require the Board to, to approve that. So if there, if there are more by the next meeting, I'll let you know if we, if we do need it in fact. All right? And so that's all I have for that item. So we'll move on to new business. Is there any new business? Okay, so no new business. The, so then we will move on to 23, public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment this evening? I see somebody in the audience that would like to comment. Please come forward. Mr. Lang.
Welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Lang.
Hello Board. Chair Superintendent, one, I, being a member of the Student Advisory Council with Rimfire, I love to congratulate Rimfire and being a Rimfire parent, that we are a B-school. I'm proud of that. I believe the teachers work very hard. Seeing the things that, you know, we talk about at SAC and the progressing, the progressions they're making with the reading and the math, I mean, you're proud of them. When you, we got a B-school, I was, I was pretty excited. I know Les Shaka, you probably really excited too, Ms. Moore, I'm sorry, Ms. Moore. I know you're pretty excited too and I was excited. I saw, I watched a little bit of your workshop today and I saw you guys talking about bullying. So here's my question about bullying. When parents, and I've talked to a few parents and I've seen posts on Facebook, what happens when a parent goes to administration about bullying, but then the administration takes it out on that child? Now, I don't have any hard facts, but I have parents talking that, you know, be careful of what you come forward with because they'll take it out on your child later. That's, that's a bad problem to have and a bad feeling to have as a parent. Like if I can't come forward and have a trust in administration or a teacher and then to feel like that my, my child is getting bullied twice now by administration, teacher, parent, you know, whatever, an adult at the school. And I don't mean, you know, bullying, I know you have a whole definition of bullying and what bullying is, but I mean, I should be able to trust that I can talk to an administrator, give my piece, and there be an investigation, but not hold it against me like, oh, I'm trying to be a troublemaker parent, you know, and I'm sure we have them. But at this point in time, like it's, it's very hard for parents to come forward. I think parents, some parents don't come forward because they just feel like, I don't want to rock the boat, I don't want to rock the boat, I don't want, I don't want my kids to have trouble. And, and it's, and it's a constant theme on, on Facebook and in comments and I, listen, I'm not giving Facebook all the credit, you know, the comments, but, but if people are scared to come forward, what, what are we doing? You know, like we, we talk about bullying, we talk about bullying and I understand and I think, I think Mr. Furry, you said something about it starts at home, and it does, it starts at home. I don't expect the school district to teach my kid how to be a good kid. I only have 38 seconds. So just a quick story, there, a second grader, I don't know her name, my, my son was having a hard time at school. He was on the floor, he was having trouble transitioning. Another second grader, now Max is in second, A S D E S E, another second grader from a Gen X class, now this is after the teacher and the parent tried to get him up for like 20 minutes. Came and kneeled down to him, helped him up, she said, you want me to help you? He put her, his arm around her and they walked to class. Like that was special, for her to do that, for my son. And I hope she continues that going through high school. I hope she remembers, like, that's Max, you know, that's, 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 I helped him, I know him. He's having trouble again. It was the best moment, I could, I mean, to hear that happened was amazing. So her parents are doing a great job raising her and I hope it continues because our ESE kids, I, I still feel like we're the redheaded stepchild in the district. I mean, unfortunately, that's how I feel. I feel like we get forgotten. So I mean, like I said, the bullying, we have to be careful how, we should be able to just come to administration without the, like worrying about how we feel, you know, and what's gonna be, repercussions of that. So I also want to throw out that, you know, we're still wondering where the $700,000 went. So, because we haven't had any updates on that and, you know, I know with Ms., you know, there's, you know, things happening and people getting dismissed and terminated or contracts ending, but 700,000, I mean, did anybody get dismissed from that? Because that's, in a corporate setting, mistake or not, you would've been gone already. It's, it's unfortunate.
Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any more public comments? Okay, seeing no one coming forward, we will move on to closing comments.
So congratulations again to our three Metansus High School students who are recognized for their amazing visual artwork. Looking on it on the screen here, it was very amazing. And I'd also like to congratulate our boys and girls varsity football teams for their incredible performances in the Metansus First FEC football game we had a couple weeks ago. And all of our performing arts groups have held great winter performances over the last few, last few weeks, that being our band, our steel drums, our chorus, and our piano program. And then over 200 of our students who passed their ELA or math test for graduation were recognized last Friday for their achievement and they're one step closer to graduation. And a big thing today, I alongside other Cambridge A students, had the opportunity to speak with State Senator Travis Hudson about the Cambridge program at our school. And that was amazing to get that word out and to try to just inform him so he had better knowledge to pass legislation in the future. And on January 12th, our steel drums band has been invited to perform at the FEM, FMEA Conference, which is where all Florida music educators meet once a year. And this is incredibly prestigious as they will be able to perform for the entire state's music educators. This week, we're celebrating the upcoming holiday with Spirit Week Dress Up Days. Today was To Wear a Holiday Flannel, which I participated in. And I'd like to once again thank the Board for this amazing opportunity to be a student representative and I'm looking forward to what this next semester holds in store for us.
Very nice.
So, just real quickly, I want to do an overview of one of our most recent events, which was December 7th, which was the literacy night event. It was a really nice event with a lot of students showing up and it was really nice seeing FPC students read to younger children, just encouraging literacy all around. To be on some of the current events we had, I want to recognize and congratulate the FPC wrestling team as our Bulldogs emerged victorious in District 2-3A reward team championship after defeating two of the top 10 ranked teams, which were Deland in the semifinals and Beholtz in the championship match. Additionally, in some of the coming months, we do have some events in December and January. For example, tomorrow at 5:30, we do have our IB diploma ceremony for our IB class of 2023, recognizing their achievements and their accomplishments. And at the same time, we also will have our winter showcase for our FPC dance company from 7 to 10 with doors opening at 6:30 and tickets for $10 for everyone within the community. Transitioning into the new year, from January 20th to 21st, we will have our annual all-day five-county home and lifestyle show at our campus. It's two whole days of lots of different booths and businesses around the school and they're just getting all involved within the school. And finally, although it is a bit far away, we will have our, another Teen Town Hall on January 24th regarding internet literacy and the impact of social media. Again, all participants will receive five community service hours for their active participation and it should be a fun and educational event. Besides that, thank you all for being here, your support, and happy holidays and have a good night.
Thank you. Just want to take a minute to thank Jason and I see Shelley. I know I did this at the last Board meeting, but I thought that was your last Board meeting. This is actually your last Board meeting. So I just wanted to say thank you for being the voice of Flagler County for so many years. It has been an honor to get to know you and Shelley and your family and wish you nothing but all the best, but make sure to come back and visit. All right. I do want to give my condolences to Winnie Oden's family. Those of you who know Winnie know that she was passionate about Flagler County schools. She was passionate about school security and safety and it's just, it was shocking news to find out that she had passed. I just want to, condolences to her family and friends, just, I'm just shocked over that. Congratulations to all our rookies, teachers, and employees of the year. That is always one of my favorite times of year when we take the time to recognize them. And Les Shaka, Superintendent Moore, thank you for bringing back that tradition that we had for a while there of acknowledging new administrators that come on board. Hopefully, at some point, we acknowledge the new teachers that come on board and any other staff. So it's just a nice tradition and I was excited to see you bring that back tonight, so thank you for that. Congratulations to all the schools, teachers, super, students and administrators for the school grades. It's hard when the state sometimes moves the target, but I'm really proud of our students and our teachers for all they were able to do. And Tommy, thanks for that middle school sports update. I think the more we talk about that, the more you're gonna have students participate in that and how incredible that we have athletes here locally that are ranking at a national level. That is so, just super cool. With that, I hope everybody gets to enjoy their holiday break, wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I think Hanukkah's probably over by now, right? And just recharge, regroup, and look forward to seeing everybody in the new year.
I'd like to take this opportunity also to thank Jason and Shelley for lots of laughs, basically. The two of you have been here with us for such a long time and had, helped us at so many different points. I don't know who's gonna be our, our main driver now to graduation, we're gonna miss that because you, you were, what are, fluber? It was fluber, correct? Yes, fluber. But I do wish you both well in Pensacola. It's gonna be exciting and it'll be new and it'll probably take you to the end of your career, so best of luck to both of you. I too am very sorry for the loss of, of Ms. Oden. I worked with Winnie very closely with safety primarily, especially at the youth center. And that's all she ever thought about. It was amazing. Whenever you talk to her, is this safe, is that safe, even people, she talks to people. And it was a shock, it was a great shock and we're certainly gonna miss her, there's no doubt about it. She, she lived Flagler schools. She really did. She was very personable, you know, and at times she didn't want to even get near it though because she was tough, but good, good, good person. I'd like to congratulate all of our teachers of the year and rookies and employees of the year because it is a great honor. To be recognized by your peers, there's nothing better. And they all have an exciting few, a few weeks, few months ahead of them, so that's good. I'd like to thank our student liaisons for their work on the virtual Teen Town Hall. Last one was a big success. Again, these gentlemen are doing a super job. Now, our next one is scheduled for the 24th, but that is also the same night as our extravaganza for all of our award-winning teachers and employees of the year, so we're gonna change that date. But I'll just let you know that, we'll get that taken care of later. But they are doing a super job and the five credits participation is really working out well. We get a lot of feedback from our youth, which has given us some direction and ideas. I also would like to congratulate Brian Willard and his staff of Road to Success. Once again, they've made another milestone and they have now graduated 350 students. That's 350 Flagler County students who have been dropped out of school and would not get a diploma nine times out of 10. And because of that wonderful program, he's been able to put together over the years, we have now added those to the graduation. So that is a huge plus for this district. I also would like to congratulate Ms. McGee for being a new part of our team. And it's a big team and I'm really looking forward to what she will bring to the Benell Elementary School and continue to work with their staff to get that school moving forward. Finally, I'd like to say happy holidays to everybody. Use this time to enjoy family, friends, and fellowship. See you all next year. Thank you.
To not take any additional time, I just, I'd like to associate myself with the comments already said around those recognized tonight, certainly Winnie, who is a very special person. Again, happy, safe holidays to everybody and I think it's already been mentioned, but again, Rimfire moving up a grade is just, it's really fantastic. And I'll just repeat something I said in the workshop earlier today. The culture at Rimfire is, is just really special with their outreach to parents, with the different events that they host, particularly multicultural events. And it did not come as a surprise to me at all that they moved up a grade this year. So just very proud of Rimfire. And I also mentioned, I'll say it again, that I know this is true of all of our elementary schools, but I'm the liaison for Rimfire, so wanted just to call special attention to them. But again, thank you all for coming out. Eddie, there's a report that's coming out, they're still working on the, the lost money. So, it's coming. Anyway, thank you all, good night.
It's been a long day and a busy season, I'm sure everybody's wrapping up their Christmas plans, so I also just associate myself with all the comments from Dr. Conklin and Ms. Masaro. And I'll just say a special congrats to Ms. McGee, I look forward to seeing you up in El- Elementary. Other than that, yeah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I hope everybody gets to enjoy time with family and relax. I can't believe we're halfway through the school year, it's just crazy, so Merry Christmas.
Yes, I'll echo many of the comments of my colleagues here. Lot to be joyful for tonight, lot to celebrate with all of our great employees. And I'll, I'll just call out one, Hannah Anderson, because her dad's here in the audience and he's a proud dad, I can see. But they're all very special and we're just grateful for all that they do. And just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and we'll see you in the new year. Ms. Moore.
Happy 85th day of school. I mean, it is so exciting. I too cannot believe we are almost halfway through the year, but I am confident that a lot of great work is happening at each of our schools and in our different departments. I too want to take an opportunity to thank Senator Hudson for coming and spending some time with our students. It's just so special that they had an opportunity to sit in a very intimate setting and talk and advocate around their program as well as ask questions. And so we do not take it lightly because we do know that it is definitely a busy season. To our families, we ask that you do take a moment while we're on break to disconnect, recharge. We ask that as we come back into the school year, that you reiterate the expectations of our school with your, with your children so we can have a great, successful end of the year. It's been a lot of great things happening over the last 85 days and I know that lots more to come, looking forward to celebrating each and every day, because each and every day is a new opportunity for us to celebrate and appreciate the great things that are happening. happening. Before we end today, I ask that you allow us to take a moment to bring Mr. Jason Willi here to the front and take a picture, maybe he'll allow Shelley to take a picture with his camera, or, you know what, can Ryan take a picture with your camera, somebody? We do ask him, for him to be able to come, and we want to get an opportunity to capture a picture with him, as he's captured so many pictures with us. And as he's coming, I want to end with these comments, I want to remind us of our guiding principles. Our guiding principles are children first, trust and respect for all, empower others, teamwork, excellence, quality, and consistency, commitment to individual needs, and get to yes. I'm just going to hold you hostage, not letting you go. That there is synchronized clapping.
All right, everybody, thank you for being here, and again, Merry Christmas, we are adjourned.